I call this meeting to order.
Could you give a roll call, please, Ms. Miller? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
And Mr. Gary?
Present.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
There's no audience participation, correct? Okay, perfect. I'll take a motion for the approval of the agenda amended to delete D five. Is there a motion?
I have one, one other thing, maybe. Item J, way down at the bottom, next meeting, did that get moved to the 29th? Or is it still the 29th?
No, it's the 28th.
It's the 28th?
Yes.
I stand corrected, thank you.
Is that a motion?
While we're talking about the agenda, their last statement to us last night, or about the marshmallow stepping, is why I wanted that other one on here. Because the community's still interested in making sure we're doing due diligence. That's why I brought it to you.
Is there a motion for approval?
I'll make it.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, would you call the vote, please? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Five zero?
Four.
Four zero, excuse me. Can you allow?
Okay, so I don't know, John, if you can pull this up, the attachment? Or someone? So, from what I understand, we're gonna do a little bit of a CSIP update tonight, and so, by way of update, we're gonna go back in time a little bit and just back up and talk about kind of the constructs of what is the, what are the underpinnings of our CSIP? And so that would relate to the Missouri School Improvement Program. And so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this particular document, but the advent of MSIP six was in 2022. So the first time the board was made aware of this information was about June of 2022. And it really was a uniquely different component of the Missouri School Improvement Program. In that prior to this advent of the program, we really weren't as school districts, meaning we weren't required to submit our continuous school improvement plans to the state. And so that was something new, and, and, and the state had a lot of standards regarding what those plans would look like. So as we kind of move through the plan, just to give you a quick history, we can skip over that slide. The, the, the history of MSIP is it started in, back in the nineties and all the way to 2022, and that's where we landed with MSIP six. So there's several iterations of this plan, and again, what does this have to do with CSIP? It has to do with how this particular, these particular guidelines inform how schools develop their plans. So moving forward, the, if you wanted to move forward one slide, or back one, so, or, somewhere. So really, this, this is the, the crux of it with clear board and superintendent direction and support. MSIP six is designed to ensure that daily school practices lead to yearly improvements and student success. So that's how they frame this, and so, in, in terms of how schools utilize this, is the state had already backwards designed how school districts needed to front-load their plans in terms of the structure. And, and you can move on. But these are the things that are essentially, the MSIP six used as their, their pillars, that it would recognize excellence, it would promote innovation, and ensure continuous improvement. So if you wanted to move to the next slide. So they developed six strands of standards, the alignment of standards, curriculum and assessment, leadership, effective teaching and learning, collaborative climate and culture, database decision-making, and equity and access. So those are the main pillars of MSIP six through, just through the lens of developing a continuous school improvement program. Cause there's other elements that have to do with MSIP six, but these are the ones with regard to the CSIP. And just in the way of ensuring that anyone that would like to have this, we're not gonna like do a raffle or anything, all that, that for Seagres passes around, but that is the 90-page document that we're talking about. So there's only a, a portion of there that has to do with the CSIP. The rest of it has to do with our annual performance report, which will be coming out soon. But nonetheless, I'm just trying to paint the picture of the underpinnings of the CSIP when it comes to the state. So if you wanna move on, we're, we'll go on to key changes, so we can skip. There we go. So really what the, the MSIP six program intends to do is look at student performance, and they look at that through the lens of proficiency, progress, and growth. We look at student-ready success index, so we look at K through 12 metrics, four-year graduation rate, and equity and access. And then they also look at continuous improvement, so that's in evidence of intentional practice, documentation, so documentation in terms of board meetings, and response with data. So you can move on to the next slide if you'd like. So these are the key changes that we saw, and, and the reason I bring it up, like I said, we were gonna go back in time to get an update, really from the lens of MSIP five towards MSIP six. Seventy percent of our annual performance report is based on how our students do in assessment data. And so that would be our grade level map data, our EOC data, and there's other data that is part of that. And thirty percent is continuous improvement, so again, I, I highlight that because we're talking about the CSIP. So thirty percent of our annual performance report is based and grounded in our CSIP. And the, the other pieces and parts to this are not necessarily germane to the, the conversation of the CSIP, and certainly if we're gonna be talking about this on a relatively regular basis, we can get to those pieces, but I just wanted to highlight that, that thirty percent of our APR is based on our CSIP. So if you wanted to go to the next slide, and we can go past this. So this is, this is really the meat and potatoes of the update to the CSIP in terms of how does MSIP six inform the CSIP? These really are the underpinnings to, to how we write that continuous school improvement program. And you can even liken it to what's our workout schedule to get to the outcomes that we wanna get to in terms of attendance, you know, assessment improvements. All of those things that you would monitor through the lens of what is the well-being of our students every day, and what is their academic gains every day in the St. Joe's School District? That's really the bottom line for a school improvement plan. So, I mean, I, I won't read that to you, but essentially, the key areas, and I think Dr. McGinnis highlighted this in, in the last board meeting, and we talked about it in the work session. If you look to your, well, it would be my right, but potentially your left, but the, the following areas. So it's leadership, again, the things that we talked about, that I, I highlighted, were the tenets of the changes to MSIP six, so that's leadership, effective teaching and learning, collaborative climate and culture, database decision-making, alignments of standards and curriculum, and equity and access. So those are the tenets for which DESI and honestly any school district would want to build their continuous school improvement plan on. And I think you saw that in, in the things that Dr. McGinnis shared with you the other day. So if you go all the way to the next slide, there's a graph. If you go to the graph, keep going. So this is, this is where we are now. So basically, and I'm gonna, I'm also gonna ask Dr. Seagres to pass out one more. So basically, this brings us to present day. In December of 2022, the St. Joe's School District uploaded its first continuous school improvement program to the state in December. And as a result of that particular, as a result of that particular upload, the district was approved with its CSIP. Thank you, sir. And we actually got some accommodations in, with regard to our CSIP. And, and we were part of what's called Cycle One. So now we're in Cycle Two of our CSIP. And so you can see from this chart, really, and this particular piece that Dr. Seagres just handed out, these are the next steps to our CSIP. So we will be continuing to update our CSIP. And right now, if you, if you'll jump to the very bottom of that page, and, right now, the state is only having certain school districts pilot this, because it is only the first advent of Cycle Two. So since we were in Cycle One, now we're in Cycle Two. So next year is when we will begin this process with the state. And you can see the different dates, because we were in Cohort One. So in terms of that process, in December of 2025, we will upload a CSIP to the state for review. In the meantime, what they're really gonna be looking for is how the plan is used to direct and guide the school district's decision-making process. And so if you look just above those bullet points that I directed to you two in this document, just right above that, there's certain plans that will need to be submitted to the state, and we already do these things. Certainly, Stacia presents the Professional Development Plan. The Assessment Plan is, is out of my department. Literacy Plan is something that, that Dr. Adams looks over, as is the Title One Plan. Facilities Plan is certainly something that Mr. Nolte looks over, as well as the School Safety Plan. And Building Improvement Plans is something that Operations and Dr. Seagres oversees. So all of those things will be something that the state comes in and looks for as evidence of we have a plan, we're working that plan, and it is something that guides our work as we go through day-to-day, daily practices that ensure students' well-being and academic success. So that's just a little history, so that you kind of better understand, okay, the CSIP is here, and how does MSIP six interact with that? Because soon you'll be seeing our annual performance report, and, and thirty percent of that will be based on our CSIP. And so that's something that, as far as I understood, just a little bit of history, so that, that is better defined for you guys as to, to how that interacts. So I will stop and take any questions you might have on that score.
Just, just to feed it back to you, okay, you ready?
Yes, sir.
The, the, so, so MSIP, state level, and they basically tell all districts, hey, you need a CSIP.
Right.
You need a plan. The CSIP needs to kinda look like this, and you're gonna be graded not only on student achievement, but on how well you're using the plan to drive your district.
Correct.
Do I get it?
Yep. And so I've got one more handout.
Uh-oh. I would've brought my mailbox, I know.
I'll tell you next time, Dr. Seagres.
No comment.
So here we go.
Make, make things a little more entertaining. And so this is, so basically, just to underscore what you, what you summarized. So out of that big packet, that 90-page document, whoever ended up with that, if you pull out just a few pages of it, this is the portion that goes towards how and what do you write your CSIP to.
Okay.
So it gives all the standards and indicators, and some of them are, have an asterisk by them. So those are non-negotiable. And, and so really, when we were scored on our previous CSIP that we submitted to the state, you just had to ensure that though, you informed the state how you were doing those things, your action plan, and, and how you were gonna measure it. So that, that is what they kind of use to score you.
So in future meetings, we'll talk about maybe portions of the CSIP and be able to ask how we're doing?
Yes.
What help do we need, that sort of thing?
Yes, and so I'm gonna pass this out just, sorry, Dr. Seagres.
No, I got it. I'm getting my steps in there.
And Dr. McGinnis asked me to go over this kind of from a high level, it, it, and we can, again, we can go, we'll dive deeper into this as we go through the school year. Right now, because we're at the beginning of the year, I couldn't give you a full balanced scorecard, because we don't have as much data as one would hope that we would have at this time of year, just because we just started.
Right.
And so we will talk more about this, but I did want to, per her direction, make sure that you saw this today, and it's something that certainly we can talk more about. But this is our balanced scorecard, unless you have a blank copy. Is there a blank copy in there? Oh, okay. And there's also, there's, and some of you may have gotten this, this is our comparison districts. So you may have too. And so just, just, and, and just very high level, but if you look at the balanced scorecard, you can see that what we do to measure our CSIP, so for the document that Dr. McGinnis shared with you the other day, that really encapsulates the strategies and the goals, and of course, on the backend, we have a lot more, you know, a lot more detailed plan, but this is the thing that met, that monitors it. So if you imagine, if you need something, like this would be the scale for the CSIP. How are we doing with the CSIP? So it monitors even more than our annual performance report. So we can, we can determine based on internal and external data how we are doing as we go throughout the school, the school year. But the thing that's key to this is we have a comparison set. And that comparison set isn't something that we just pull out of a hat. It is based on a, the Q method, and we rate those school districts based on a variety of indicators, and, and as a result, can generate a 10 district comparison set. Because if we don't have a 10 district comparison set, we don't know how we're performing. It's like trying to be best in class. So we can compare ourselves to the state, or we can compare ourselves next to our, to our neighbors, but if we don't have the same challenges and, and size and different characteristics, it's not a good comparison for us to, to set goals for performance improvement. So what happens with the scorecard? And again, I'm going fast, and we'll, we'll, we can come back to this, cause we're going to see this throughout the school year. So what happens when you see all of these numbers that go across? Those are the scores of those 10 comparison districts. And then we can place ourselves within that context. And what that helps us do is to set goals for steps in next improvement. So we know where we wanna get to is our goal, and we know where we are if we're performing moderately, and we know where we are if we're in risk. And these, this particular scorecard doesn't just measure academic performance. And, and the reason for that is just as I've explained in the indicators that you've seen, and also the CSIP that Dr. McGinnis presented the other day, because it's, the standards and indicators aren't solely around the academic services department. They are around operations, finances, human resources, all of the, the components of an organization that are gonna make it successful. So we can chase academic services goals all day long, but we have to have everything else in place, so we have to have a scorecard for finances, and that's at the very top. Academics, our climate, and our employee goals. And so you can see that hits the tenants of the CSIP, when you really think back to the six standards that, that I mentioned earlier that DESI has set before us. And so we have to have ways that we monitor those things. So sometimes those are annual metrics, sometimes those are daily metrics, like attendance, and sometimes those are three times a year type of metrics. So data isn't always fresh, but it does help us in terms of a compass for what our next steps will be. Yes, ma'am?
Could you give us an example about how the district receives a score? Like, is it after like an audit, or is there like a panel? Like, if we're looking at, if you look at this scorecard and we're looking at number one? Like, how would we get that score?
Okay, so just give me a line number, and I should've brought my glasses up here.
Responsible with taxpayer dollars, and so if we're at risk, we're not doing very good.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, survey, survey data. Yeah, community survey data.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And so it's?
It's annual. Those are annual items, so we would ask that question from a community survey.
I see. Okay, okay, I thought.
Yeah, so it's not.
It was maybe like audit-based or something?
No. And, and a lot of this information is internal, because a lot of this is, I mean, a balanced scorecard for an organization is oftentimes very, an internal, not external-facing document, because our APR is a, a community-facing public document. So we can utilize this as a compass at the same time that we're tracking that annual performance report.
But some of it's data, right? Like ACT composite average, that's gonna be data, that's not a survey.
Right.
Right?
Right. And so you're gonna get that one time a year, but we can track it. We, the, the end goal, the, the end of year, like if you notice in these columns, right here, VOY, MOY, and EY, so we track it throughout the course of the year, but our end of year is what folks are gonna measure us by.
I got you. Okay.
So again, that's just something, again, another piece to the CSIP. So it is something that we can track and monitor and, and look at, and then discuss and guide, but each department has their own plan that, that plays a role in this.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Of course. To be continued, yes.
Number two board meetings and dates, Ms. Miller?
I just wanted to bring to you guys' attention that the November board meeting is on the 25th, which is the week of Thanksgiving. I wanted to make sure that everybody was gonna be here or be in town, in case we needed to do that.
I'll be out of town about to.
Stood the week before.
Anybody else?
Rick said he would like to see it moved the week before.
Okay.
That's okay with everybody.
That's why, that's why I bring it up, cause I'm, I just wanted to make sure we have a form that.
Yeah, I can do either, Donna, so if you move it good, if you don't move it, good, for me.
I don't mind moving it.
Would that work better for you, Asar?
Yes.
To do it the week before?
Yeah, I can.
That'll work.
I can do that one, the eighteen.
Then again, in December, the board meeting is set for the 23rd, which is the week of Christmas. So once again, and we've got lots of meetings in December because of the superintendent search. So we could forego the work session on the ninth, since we have those other three meetings with the superintendent search, and we could move the board meeting to either Wednesday or Thursday, the 18th or 19th.
I could do, I can do the 18th or 19th.
Why can't you just forego the work session and do the 16th?
Good.
Cause I'm not able to do, and I'm not able to do the 19th. How about the 16th?
16th, I could do.
Are we gonna set a date and then kind of let Rhonda and Damon?
Mm-hmm. I will get in touch with Rhonda and, and Whitney both, to make sure that those dates work. So we're gonna change it, November to week before.
We're gonna cancel the work session on the ninth and move the board meeting to the 16th.
And that's in December.
Yep, December.
Yeah, I can do the 16th.
Okay?
Yep.
Anything else, Ms. Miller?
Yeah, that was it, just wanted to make sure we have a form.
Perfect. Adult education teacher, Dr. Kraus?
Yes, because of the changing demographics in the community, our adult ed programs are finding that they could benefit by having some teachers to teach English to adult immigrants. And so what's before you is the proposed job description for that. There would be no real cost to the district, because this position would be funded through the grant that, that AEL has to begin with, so it would just be able to start this position to better meet their needs. Are there any, any questions about that? Are there any, any questions about that?
How many do we have currently?
Uh, none, I don't believe, that are specifically doing that task. So it would be, uh, a new position. But again, they would reallocate their grant dollars to pay for it. So there's nothing to the general budget that would change of the district.
How many adults could we serve? I'm sorry, sir.
Um, I don't know that there's, uh, a limit we would, they run within their budget. Uh, so they can't really add a lot of things to their budget on any given year. But, uh, it could adjust, um, you know, for the next fiscal year if necessary.
How many teachers are we looking to hire? Only one or just as their budget will allow in the future?
Uh, as, as budget would allow. I think they're planning to start with one.
And I guess the, the, the end game to this is that they can, in turn, by learning English better, they can relate better to their kids as far as their homework and school. I mean, is that kind of the?
Now, now, this, this would not be, um, I mean, it would, could potentially be parents or, or that, but it wouldn't necessarily have a direct, not necessarily a direct correlation to the school district. But, um, you know, certainly would open up employment opportunities for anybody, uh, who was able to, um, you know, become better in English.
I see the angle there, yeah, okay.
So the, um, adult literacy teachers now at the Kately Center that do that program, they are not member, are staff members of the district?
Well, yes, they're, technically they are, their salaries are paid by a grant.
Okay. And you're talking about adding to that or starting?
No, they would, they would still function within their, their grant dollars, but, um, the director would reallocate as needed to, to open that position.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
And we don't vote on that?
No, it's just an info item. We'll, we'll bring it back on the twenty-eighth.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Kraus, that's also you.
Okay, the next one is a memorandum of understanding with Fort Hays State University. Uh, there's no cost to the district in, in this. They have a student who's attending there that wants to do his or her student teaching here. Uh, and so every college that, uh, I know of has a memorandum. Uh, again, no cost to the district. It just, uh, outlines the, what we will provide for the student, which is basically a classroom of kids to teach and a mentor teacher to, uh, help them grow in their profession. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and then we'll ask you to vote on it, um, next time. Any questions about that?
Questions, thank you. Um, and your last one, early notification of retirement, Dr. Kraus?
Yes, every, every year, uh, in October, I bring to you, there's a board policy which allows for, if the, the board votes on it every year, whether to do it or not, a stipend of one thousand dollars for anybody who meets, uh, PSRS retirement qualifications that gets early notification of their retirement. So that will have a longer time to, to look for those positions. With the way the dates of calendar fall this year, anybody, if you vote to approve it, anybody who submits evidence of retirement, uh, no later than November twenty-sixth and is PSRS eligible for retirement would receive a thousand dollars. Uh, if they have all their things in before Christmas, they'd get it on their December check. And if they get their paperwork in later, it would come on their June check. Uh, over the last five years, I think the averages have been, uh, the least I remember is seventeen people who took advantage of this and the most thirty-two. So you're probably looking at an expenditure of around twenty-five thousand dollars, give or take a little.
Yeah. Dr. Kraus, there's a, uh, in the explanation of this agenda item, I think there might be an error. It says if, if the associate tells us by, uh, whatever date you said, then they'll get paid. If they, if they don't, they'll get paid in, so if they don't tell us in, by November, whatever, twenty-four, they'll get paid in June of twenty-four. I think it's supposed to be June of twenty-five.
Okay.
I think.
That, that is definitely correct. Wouldn't be June of twenty-four.
You're right, that's what I figured. And then, um.
Yeah, I'll get that fixed. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, no, thank you. And, um, so, I mean, the idea here, the benefit for the district is that we, we get a heads up, we are able to plan better.
Correct.
So if you, if you, if you didn't have this, and I don't know how common this is around districts, but if you didn't have this, when, when do people tell us?
Well, nobody's required to tell you. Uh, in our district, you're not required to tell until June first. Uh, and after June first, then there's a penalty, uh, provision in there. Tenured teachers are on a, uh, continuing contract, so they're not required to let us know ever. Uh, if somebody is probationary, they have a fifteen count, or fifteen business days after they're offered their contract to respond whether or not they want it. We typically offer contracts, uh, after the April board meeting, so, um, otherwise, we wouldn't know. You know, if they chose not to tell us until first of May to first of June.
Is this common among districts?
That's state law. Uh, those, those dates.
Thousand dollar.
The thousand, uh, some are, some are a thousand, some are more, some don't offer it at all. But yes, it's fairly common.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's becoming more common, I would say. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine, I was going to ask the same thing. If there are no more questions? Thank you, Dr. Kraus.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Dr. Segras?
Uh, yes, just want to give you an update on the bond projects. Um, the athletic fields, tracks, turf, uh, bid opening was this week, uh, for the turf. Um, we're doing the turf first because depending on what we do turf-wise, that will dictate a little bit of how the dirt work and everything occurs. So that has, it's kind of a step-by-step process. They'll be, uh, looking at those, uh, bids and will bring that to you at the October twenty-eighth meeting for approval. Uh, which by the way, you're going to see that your October twenty-eighth meeting is going to be busy. Uh, the Hosea addition, uh, that is continuing to be on track. Herne's working on that. Uh, Creel Park is running it for us. And that looks to still be on track for, uh, a completion by April eleventh. Road projects, uh, the Carden Park, uh, bid opening happened here, uh, on the tenth. Uh, you will have, uh, a recommendation from E.L. Crawford had the lowest bid. And that recommendation will come to you on the twenty-eighth also, uh, for your approval. Sidewalks, uh, the bids will be going out, uh, within the next week or two here. Very close on putting those out. Goldberg has been working on those. Entercom Systems, um, the RFP went out and Jake has received those. And they are doing interviews with, uh, different companies right now, the next couple of weeks. And that will be coming to you also for approval on October twenty-eighth. Uh, the fine arts upgrades, um, that bid was awarded to LaHawn. And those, those are continuing, uh, that's such a wide variety of things going on there that it's happening in a lot of places at different times. And again, they're also working around, uh, performances, things like that, so they don't get interfered with that. HVAC upgrades, um, RFQs, uh, for, uh, an energy savings portion, we're working through it that way. RFQs are due the sixteenth. And they'll be bringing that to you also on the twenty-eighth for approval, uh, of a company to do that. And then the science and technology upgrades, uh, academic services is still working on, uh, getting information from, uh, buildings about what direction they want to go with some of those upgrades there. So a lot of things are moving right now. Uh, I knew once the snowball started that it would pick up a lot of steam and, uh, that's where we're at. So you will have a lot of things on the October twenty-eighth meeting for your approval. Happy to take any questions you guys might have about those.
If there are no questions? Thank you, Dr. Segras.
Okay. Policy and procedure reviews. Um, I hope that everyone's had a time in order to, to review those. I know that the admins offered the recommendations of approval. Um, I just had a question about D and E. Because I know that there was a change. Is anyone able to explain that?
Kraus or Segras?
Oh, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that was, oh, that was the change, okay. Um, there was just, uh, there was an editorial piece on one of them. It said six and it said five. Uh, and then the other piece is, um, when we, when we pay out leave days for retirees, there's always been a little bit of a, by practice, we have, if you fall between, for example, the table runs one to five, six to ten, uh, ten to, or eleven to fifteen, so on. Well, we have more and more people who actually don't complete a year. They retire, but maybe they end up at ten and a half years. And so our practice has been, well, we've just gone up to, they're in the eleven to fifteen category. So I just asked that we rewrite, write that to say one to five, five to ten, ten to fifteen, fifteen to twenty, so that if they're short of fifteen, they're in the ten to fifteen. If they've completed fifteen years and one month, then they are in the fifteen to twenty, for example.
Okay, so pretty much just a cleaning up.
It's just, it's really just a cleaning up of it because.
Because I was looking at it earlier, I just wanted to make sure.
You know, let's say that they retired twenty years and three months. Well, are they in fifteen to twenty or are they in twenty-one to twenty-five? And so this just cleans that up. It sets that clean line for wherever it happens to be. And especially you see this a lot with support staff who, you know, may start in the midst, the middle of a year or they may finish in the middle of a year, things like that.
I was going to say, con- contract.
You don't see as much of teachers, obviously, but a lot of your support staff, you'd see that, yeah.
I got you.
I appreciate the estimation, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions about any of the policies? Because we're only looking over them and it will be also on the agenda for approval on the twenty-eighth. All right, advocacy positions. Um, this weekend is our, is MSBA conference. And it will be a delegate assembly. And there are three advocacy positions up for approval. And, and as our delegates are going up, I just wanted to make sure that everyone on the board is on board about the approval of those. Has everyone had a look, a chance in order to look at those? Anything that anyone has a question about?
Perfect, that was easy. Can you elaborate on the advocacy positions?
Sure.
Please.
If you'll look on the link, um, attached on the agenda, let me pull that up.
I can.
I think I swiped terrible eye here.
Well, that's weird.
Oh, you sent me a link, a URL. And that's what's, it's not.
Yeah, I, I didn't review it, Latanya, because I couldn't open.
Okay, well. Advocacy position number one, it's about non-public school funding. It, and it states that the committee is bringing about a recommendation that MSBA will support the measures to increase accountability of all non-public K through twelve schools that will participate or get extra funds off of these state programs. Pretty much it says that, that they're asking for if an entity i- is not like a public entity, that they be held to the same accounting, accounting as standards of public entities.
Like charter schools or?
Uh, it just says non-public, K through twelve schools. And then it goes on to state that MSBA opposes the use of tax credits, vouchers, and deductions for tuition and other educational related expenses that are not s- subject to the same accountability and the standards of Missouri public schools. And that's their recommendation of the committee for approval.
So the school district, the St. Joseph School District is advocating for that?
It's what we're asking right now. Because the committee has because the committee brought a recommendation to the executive committee. And then the executive committee brought the recommendation to the school boards. And then at the assembly, it will be voted upon.
Then you're asking us to take the stands?
With MSBA.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to read through them. I haven't been able to pull it up either.
They're generally saying that, that we are advocating that public dollars.
Go to public schools.
Go to public schools. If private schools or non-public schools are taking public dollars, whether it be through vouchers, tax credits, whatever, that they have the same accountability standards. I believe that's what it's saying. Which, which would be what public educators would advocate for.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And then number two states, well, I wish there, there was more time, since the delegate assembly is on Friday. And then number two states that MSBA also supports additional funding for school districts to provide free lunches and breakfasts to all students. And these are also recommendations from the advocacy committee to the executive committee to the school districts, and it will be on the ballot on Friday. And then number three, and it's the last one. Um, MSBA supports school districts authority to adopt the policies to restrict cellphone usage during school hours, including restriction against the unauthorized recording of students, faculty and staff on personal devices. And then again, it's a rec- it's a recommendation from the advocacy advocacy committee to the exec board, to the districts. And MSBA is asking all school districts, um, to support those advocacy positions. Are there any questions about any of them?
I just, I just went back in and re-saved it. It's a different entity and if you refresh your.
It should pop up.
Refresh your computers, it should pop up. And hopefully you'll be able to pull that one up. It, what it will do, it will allow you to download it because it's a, it's a big file.
Okay.
So does this need a vote or is this a discussion item as well?
Well, it's on Friday. Um, and so.
Just has any information.
It's a recommendation and that's why it's not an action item.
I guess your discussion is, as a board, how you want to direct Kim to vote because she's your delegate. That, I think, is what is happening.
Yes.
Yeah, we can respond after we read them and send us an email.
Yes. Send them to Kim and I each, because I'll be voting as well. And so just an individual email. And so, just an individual email to both Kim and I. And they're in the packet, pages nine, 10, and 11. All right.
I haven't pulled it up, but I trust you. I'll find it.
Okay. Yeah, if you have any problems, let me know.
Is there a motion to adjourn the work session and open a regular, regular meeting session? Asar, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Now, it's 5 to 0. I call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Present.
And as there is no audience participation, is there an approval of the agenda? Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
5 to 0. Action item. I guess that's you, Dr. Seagres?
That's me. And actually, probably, you're not going to end up doing an action item tonight, because we're going to revise this slightly. We took RFQs for the selection of architectural services for the proposed construction of a high school per board policy, FEB. As a board, how that dictates is that you will, once we receive those, you'll shortlist the top three firms. Well, that hard work's been done for you, because only three, we got three proposals. So, you have all three of those in front of you. We could ask you tonight to quickly evaluate and then make a recommendation of who you would like us to negotiate with. Because we, we met yesterday, and a couple of board members were not able to attend yesterday for that. And so, we decided that I'm going to ask you to have these until the next meeting. And then at the next meeting, you all can decide which firm you would like us then to negotiate with. And I'll just talk real briefly. The three, three that you received from were DLR, Goldberg, and Ellison-Oxer. DLR, we've worked with a little bit in the past. They also have teamed with Creel Clark and Seifert, which is a local architect. It's part of their proposal. Goldberg is local, and they have teamed with Toss out of Kansas City and Matrix out of Michigan. And then Ellison-Oxer is also local, and they have teamed with a couple of Kansas City companies in their proposal. Henderson Engineering, Engineers out of Kansas City, and Bob Campbell Company out of Kansas City. So, I'm asking that you take these over the next couple of weeks, and that when you come back for the October 28th meeting at that time, you will, one of you make a motion on who you would like to go with, and then the board will make that recommendation. And at that time, whichever your top selected one is, then we will negotiate contracts with them and then bring that contract back to you. I would ask that you do return these proposals. You can return to Donna's office. I can get them from her at some point. Or you can, we can get them back that night at the board meeting as well. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
One comment that I would make, and Robert doesn't even know this yet, but he, he's going to find out in about 12 seconds. I'm, I'm actually always thinking, and I was talking to Mike and Latanya before the meeting. And what I'm going to do is charge him tomorrow with reaching out to each one of these folks and providing us with a timeline of what it looks like from October 28th to April of, April 6th of 2025. That way, you guys will have an idea of what has to take place in order for something like this to be on the ballot. I think that's a, a fair thing to ask them. And I'll ask them to turn in that timeline by October the 24th, which would be Thursday before your board meeting. So, I would just recommend that you take a look at that timeline and keep that in the back of your mind as you make the decision for who to partner with.
Thank you.
Robert, the, the, the kind of local architect partnership with, with bigger, bigger firms, is that just because of the size of the job, basically?
I think it's a little bit of that, yeah. I mean, these, these are, this is obviously a large project, comparatively speaking. I also think, you know, I think it's good to have a local footprint here as well. So, depending on which direction you're talking about partnering, you know, if it's outside companies, good, they have somebody local they're working with. If it's a local company, it, obviously, it's good that they're here. But it may be a project this large, and they may need to bring in some outside expertise on that a little bit.
Got you. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions? All right, if there are none, our next meeting is October 28th, 5:30. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
Thank you. Is there a second? Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.